All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. If I could have a roll call, please.
Ms. Antoine.
Here.
Ms. Bonnick.
Here.
Ms. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Hocky.
Here.
Mrs. Ikors.
Here.
I'm here.
All right, let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looking over the agenda tonight, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Support.
Motion by Chahaki, a tie for a second.
Pick one.
Uh huh, I got it.
Got that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to our spotlight then. I think we have a couple features.
Yes, we do. Two spotlights for you tonight. We're going to start with Mrs. Maruka from the Romeo Virtual Academy.
Thank you very much. All right, good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you an update on kind of what's going on in RVA. It is an exciting place to be. So, you know, in thinking about, you know, trying to pare this down honestly to 10 minutes, it's hard. So, my thought was, you know, I feel like we are in a year of real transformation, which is perfect since it's the district theme for the year. Now that we, you know, we have the added position, we have a coordinator, Mike Stably, we're able to do a little bit more kind of thinking ahead and not just, you know, hurry up, hurry up, get those classes ordered, let's go, let's go. So, it's been nice because we can sort of transform, I feel like, with intention this year. So, as we've talked, Mike and I and the mentors, you know, we've looked at this quote, "The only way of discovering the limits of the possible is to venture a little way into the impossible." So, you know, historically, I feel like RVA has been, "Let's get these kids graduated," and we've done that. The graduation rate is 98%. So, what's next? Well, that's what we're going to talk about. We decided this year that we really wanted to spend some time looking at quality. Like, we've got quantity. People are graduating from RVA. So, what could we do better? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, what could we do better? We thought we knew what we could do better, but sometimes, you know, we as adults think we know, and sometimes we're right, and sometimes we don't quite have the mark. So, we said, "You know what? Let's talk to our kids. Let's talk to our graduates and ask them." Given the size that we are, we had 67 seniors last year. That's doable to be able to contact each one of them and have a conversation. So, we've done just that. And we talked to them with two questions. The first is, just, "What are you doing? What are you up to? We miss you. What's happening?" But secondly, "What could we have done better for you now that you're out and you're in the grown-up world and you've kind of taken your next step? What could we have done?" We had some fascinating conversations. Our kids told us what we did well, and I'll tell you about that in a few minutes. But first, I want to share with you what they shared with us that we could do better. And some of this, we suspected. The beauty of it, though, is the details we got from our former students. They told us, "I could have used a little more help getting ready." And both groups, kids who went to college and kids who went into training programs or the workforce, they all said that to us. I just, ugh, I didn't quite know. I didn't know what was out there. And honestly, as we had those conversations, some are still struggling. But it was a great opportunity for us to be able to say, "Well, you know, Macomb Community College is, has free tuition for the first two years." We said that lots of times, but sometimes we all know that we have to be in the right place and the right time in our life to hear a message. So, now that they're out, I had several kids say, "Wait, wait, wait, what?" And I said, "Yeah, it's free, so here's what we do." So, we found ourselves kind of working with those kids more than we even planned to, but that's okay, they're still our kids. So, they told us they needed more preparedness in those two areas. So, we said, "Okay, what are we going to do?" You know, we put out, we started a really snazzy, pretty, you know, glitzy newsletter. And the truth of the matter is, people, not just kids, grown-ups, I'm guilty of it myself, we don't read things as thoroughly as we used to. There's a lot coming at us. So, we know that. So, we said, "Okay, how can we get this information to them so that they do take it in?" So, we've been doing YouTube announcements. We link them in the, right at the top of the newsletter, and that's all the important things. And it's a lot more fun to watch Amy Maruka and Mike Stably than it is to watch Amy Maruka read to you. So, we have some fun with those, and I know they're watching because YouTube gives me a count and tells me how many people, you know, unless the same kids watching my announcements 100 times, which I doubt, we're hitting about 100, 110 kids, and we are sitting at 153. So, that's pretty good in terms of, you know, percentage. We've also leveraged our mentors. Like, we give our mentors one or two things each week, and we say, "For seniors, the FAFSA, they've got to get that FAFSA done, please. It's in the announcements, it's in the newsletter, but it's different when it's one-on-one." So, our mentors have kind of talking points, especially for our juniors and seniors this year. And then, Macomb Community College has agreed to do a couple of virtual presentations just for us that our kids can tune into. They can come in if they want, but they can tune into those. And it's, the first one's going to be like, "How do you, how do you apply? How do you, what are the mechanics of getting into Macomb? What are the steps?" The second one is all about the tech programs. There are a lot of fantastic certificate programs at Macomb. You can make a living wage and better sometimes with a 13-week, 16-week certificate program. There's welding, there's health programs. There's just a lot in our backyard that we need our kids to know about. So, we're working on getting that out to them. For our kids who went to work, many of them said, "I, I just," and honestly, many of them said, "Well, I'm, I'm working, you know, at this job. I, I don't want to be here for a long time. I don't know, I don't know the next step, Mrs. Maruka. I don't know what to do." So, we, we take that, we take it all seriously, but that, that really hit home for me. So, we talked as an admin team at the high school and said, "You know what? RVA kids need to be involved in Manufacturing Day when they go out and tour, you know, a company." So, in addition to that, I went to Career Day and drummed up lots of connections. So, now, we're just setting up our own tours this year, and it will be smaller groups, 10 or 12 kids. Our first one's in January to Plastivore in New Baltimore so that our kids can go see, see a shop, in this case, see what injection molding is like. But we're targeting it, like, we have our seniors, we have a list. Okay, what does this person want to do? Oh, you want to work in a shop? Well, guess what? You might want to come on the tour on, in January. So, we're really, you know, we're still small enough that we can really individualize and tailor these things, so it's not just kind of like, you know, throw it at the wall and see what sticks. We know, okay, these eight kids want to work in a shop, then let's go see some shops. So, we're excited about that. Another thing our kids told us, and it's, you know, we walk a fine line in RVA in this regard, is that sometimes they feel isolated. And so, for the kids who said that, I said, "Tell me more about that," because you know you can play sports, you can join clubs, you can do all the things a seated student can do. And they said, "I know, Mrs. Maruka, I know, but..." I said, "But what?" And we just kind of teased that out a little bit. Our kids, you know, they, they, they want to be included, they want to feel seen, I believe, but they often don't want to be part of this massive event. So, the two pictures up in the corner are a smaller event that we hosted just in the lab, come on in. The other thing, as we talked at our admin team, Mr. Osble, this was his idea. He said, "Why don't we have RVA kids in Student of the Month? You should have a Student of the Month, just like every other academy." I said, "Oh, geez, you're right." So, last month, our first Student of the Month, Jacob Matt, was honored and will continue to do that, so. Then, we talked to our kids about, you know, a lot of them had lots of nice things to say. And what really is working, and it's not a huge surprise, is the mentor model. Mentors, you know, just by definition, are people who invest in the transformation of other people. There's our theme again. So, I thought it was worth putting up, you know, our awesome mentors. We've got Becky Saha, Maureen Angeli, Laura Smudka, Gloria Kenzel. Gloria comes to us, she's relatively new. She's a fitness coach, and her fitness coaching has folded really well into getting motivated to do your schoolwork. So, Mike Stably, who's of course our coordinator, but he still mentors a few of our students. And then, our newest addition, Elena Tabby, literally started on Friday. And Elena is a counseling, in grad school for counseling and has done some long terms at our high school. So, we know that the mentor model works. And I even pressed the kids, you know, they would say nice things and say, "My mentor was great." And I'd say, "Okay, that's great, I'm glad. What could your mentor have done better? Like, talk to me about that." And I, I couldn't get them to say. They'd say, "No, it was, it was perfect. I mean, they answered my questions." But really, as I listened to our kids, what they were saying, and I don't think they even realize it, is they had a go-to adult. They had somebody who was in their corner, who believed in them, and somebody who would take their good intentions. Because I'm telling you, our kids, when we press them and we say, "Okay, hey, we need to get some more work done, so when are we going to start that econ class?" They always have good intentions because they are lovely human beings, just like most of us. And they say, "You know what? When I get home from work tonight, I'm on it. I am doing that." And so, our, our mentors have gotten really good at saying, "Oh, okay, so what time do you get home tonight? Eight o'clock, okay. So, what time do you think you need to go to sleep?" Like, we have to get pretty specific and say, "Okay, well, I'm going to check tomorrow then. So, what do you think you'll have done? You like one post-test, two?" And, you know, you build an accountability, and we all need that, not just kids, grown-ups too. So, I think we've learned along the way how to be really good mentors and help our kids, you know, transform. And of course, as Winnie the Pooh says, "It just makes such a difference to have someone who believes in you." Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a quick one. And I think you've shared this before, maybe it was in one of our packets. But how many do you think walked in our graduation last year? Did, did many participate in that? I just don't remember.
Most did. Most did, okay. We had 67 seniors, and I believe 62 walked.
Okay, awesome.
Yep.
That's cool.
Can you give us an idea of numbers right on down to elementary? Like, do you feel like it's growing? I know our secondary is growing, but...
Right now, we are sitting at 154 kids. I have a list of kids who would like to come second semester of, I want to say, 15. This is the biggest senior class we've ever seen. This is, we're at 79 right now. So, and it, it really just goes in order. So, I have the most seniors, and then juniors, sophomores, freshmen. And then, middle school, we have one sixth grader, four seventh graders, and eight eighth graders. So, just to give you an idea.
Do you believe that you have the resources that you need for the opening of the second semester open enrollment?
I do.
You do? You have all, you have everything you need?
Let me qualify that.
Okay.
We might, depending on how many choicers we would get, we might need to hire one more mentor. But in terms of management capacity, we're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Maruka.
Thank you.
Do I get the honor of introducing our next spotlight? I just wanted to clarify for the public and Mrs. Ikors, we are only 612. We are only secondary for RVA. We don't have plans to expand K5. So, I thought kids might like to see their names. So, I'm going to invite Mr. Martz and Mrs. Vengler to come up. And I, I don't know if Mrs. Raisovich is coming up as well, but they're your support, okay. We wanted to highlight some of the cool stuff that is happening at Romeo Middle School and keeping on the theme of transformation. Mr. Martz? Middle schoolers, I think you need to line up. Bring, bring your stuff.
Well, good evening. We have a few students with us tonight and some amazing staff members. Jen Raisovich, our academy coach, and Caitlin Vengler, our new assistant principal here from Romeo Middle School, presenting some of the events and opportunities that occurred this year so far. If you take a look at our mission statement, "Create small learning communities where each student has an advocate, can explore their interests, engage with their community, and be empowered to make a change." And I take a look at our logo there, you see "Explore, Engage, and Empower", which are all directly linked to our mission statement. Explore, in the green up there, our sixth-grade academy where the opportunity to explore nonprofits and community organizations. Engage, the yellow section, represents our seventh-grade academy where they begin to work with nonprofits and community organizations. And finally, empower in the blue, our eighth-grade academy where envision our students using these skills to positively impact our community. In listening to our students and staff today, you will see this connection to what our students are doing with the transformation of RMS into our academy model. We're extremely proud of these guys and of our students at Romeo Middle School. I'm going to step back and let our students introduce themselves and tell them a little bit about what's going on at Romeo Middle School. How's that? Is that good?
Yeah.
You're great.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brielle McElargie, and I'm in sixth grade. Today, I'm excited to share with you two recent experiences our sixth-grade class at Romeo Middle School had. Last month, all those sixth graders went on a field trip to Skyline. Two words I would use to describe this field trip was, are exciting and amazing. We got to climb trees, build shelters in the woods, and feed the farm animals. We even played a fun survival game that took us all around Skyline. This field trip really taught us how to work together, try new things, and have fun while doing it. In November, we also had the chance to attend the nonprofit fair. This event helped us practice talking to adults and building our communication and listening skills. We learned about many different nonprofits in and around our community and were able to ask questions about what the people do. It definitely made me excited to find new ways to get involved with my community. Thank you for letting me share my experiences today.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruin Arkin. I'm a sixth grader at Romeo Middle School, and I'm here to talk about the Skyline Camp Field Trip. Skyline was a very fun place because we got to explore nature, climb trees, run around, play games, and have fun. My favorite part is when we got to play Predator Prey. Predator Prey is a game where we got into groups, and they were split up between snakes, eagles, frogs, and insects. And we got to chase or attack each other to represent the fruit chain. We run around to, we got to run around, learn about our students, learn about our teachers, and got to know a lot about people. Overall, Skyline was a very fun place to go. We also attended a nonprofit fair. We went to the gym, and we talked about a bunch of nonprofit organizations. We asked questions about what they did, how they got started, if we were to work there, what we do. And if we finished our questions, we could go around and visit whatever nonprofits we wanted to learn about. Some of them passed out stickers, pencils, glasses, and headphones. And my favorite part about it is how I got to learn about a bunch of new organizations, and I even donated to one of the nonprofits called Canine Rescue League. Thank you for letting me share.
Hi, I'm Grace Vincent, and I'm in seventh grade. And today, I'll be talking to you about our Stream Leaders Field Trip to Woolcot Mills Rotary Camp. The purpose of our field trip was to have some hands-on experience with collecting data to determine water quality in three different ways. The factors that determine the water quality are physical, chemical, and biological. One of my jobs was to collect data for the biological station where we went into the stream using waders, and I caught some crawfish. I think this was a great experience, and I had a great time, and I look forward to going back. We learned a lot, and it was overall just so great. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Robbie. I'm part of seventh grade, and I'm here to represent the Stream Leaders Experience. Now, the Stream Leaders' mission is to keep ours and others' water safe. They're integrated into our seventh-grade science class and an extension of the nonprofit fair we did last year. Seventh graders, the seventh graders went to Woolcot Mill and collected water samples to use our different science categories, biological, physical, and chemical, to determine if our water is healthy. My favorite part was the biology where the helper really kept us engaged, even if he didn't go, didn't get to go in the water, which was probably the best part about it. And it, that's actually the one that's showing up on screen. The first one, us collecting the bugs. Second one, us identifying. And the third one, collecting, like, in putting them in the little ice cube trays. Now, I think it was really integrated very well into seventh grade because, like, it's just better to get into nature instead of being in a classroom where we don't really have a connection to the people in the scenario. Well, in this one, it's our water, and if we don't keep it safe, then there's going to be bigger problems down the line. Thank you.
Hi, my name's, hi, my name's Jacob, and I'm an eighth grader here at Romeo Middle School. I'm a part of the leadership class. Throughout the year so far, I've had the opportunity to be involved in a lot of different school events with, which I'm here to share with you. In leadership, we've been focused on building different skills like teamwork, communication, and organization by actively running and supporting different events. We learned how to serve others and make a difference in our community. One of the biggest things we've helped out so far this year was the nonprofit for sixth graders. At this event, many local organizations came in to talk about the different work they do and how they help our community. Each sixth grader got the opportunity to visit four different nonprofits and to learn about the different causes and way to get involved with them. Leadership students handled things behind the scenes. We were each assigned different nonprofits to organize and support while setting up their tables, helping them find their way around the building, and checking in throughout the event to make sure they had everything they needed. We also helped clean up both their spaces and the event area afterwards. My favorite part of this event was seeing the effect it had on the sixth graders. A lot of them were really engaged and curious. For many, it opened their eyes to how many different ways people can serve their community and that they're not too young to make a difference themselves. Another major project we organized was Socktober, a school-wide drive collecting socks and other personal hygiene items for people in need. Throughout October, leadership promoted the drive, managed donations, and sorted everything. In the end, we collected nearly 4,000 items, which was really exciting and showed how our school community can come together for a good cause. Through these projects, I've learned that the leadership is about serving others, communicating well, and helping things run smoothly so our entire community benefits. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carter, and I am also an eighth-grade student at RMS. Currently, I'm enrolled in both Student Council and the eighth-grade leadership class. As a leadership student, I've had the opportunity to help plan and participate in Penny Wars. Penny Wars is our annual school ride fundraising competition to help raise money for the book fair. Students who cannot afford to purchase a book can use book fair money that we've raised to help purchase one. Leadership students like myself planned and operated the event. From these experiences, I personally learned a lot about the event planning process and how to make an event successful. As a member of Student Council, I also helped to plan the Glow Party. Every October for the past four years, Student Council has hosted this event. The Glow Party provides our students with a fun, engaging atmosphere where we can all have fun and be ourselves. This year was particularly successful as we had a record-breaking attendance. Both of these events have helped me and other students demonstrate leadership skills through Leadership A and Student Council, which will help both ourselves and our school in the future.
So, that is just a small example of things that we're doing now, transforming our middle school into our academies. If you guys have any questions for my amazing students or any staff members, let us know. If not, well, walk away.
Mr. Martz, we always want to commemorate it for the students and staff. So, if everyone wants to come up front and stand right in front of the board table, the board members will stand up behind you. And Mrs. McFarland, will you be our photographer, please? Parents, feel free to get a picture if you'd like to. Come on up.
Maybe you guys should come all the way down.
Click that back.
We tuck in.
To the, to the first slide.
Yeah. Do you have questions? No.
That's our spotlight for this evening.
It was. Well, thank you all very much for coming. I know a few of us went to the nonprofit fair last week, and it was pretty amazing. So, lots of great things happening. We are going to move on to our consent action items. I will read them off. Approval of general funds, approval of financial reports, which were in our packet, approval of wire transfer reports, purchasing card expenditures, the minutes from our regular meeting in October, as well as the minutes from our special meeting held last Monday. And then, the last item is just the first reading of Policy 4005, Other Matters of Employment Outside Activities, which had to do with tutoring. So, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Accept these. Motion by Rice.
Support.
Support by Bowman. And I am going to open it up for discussion. I have a letter to read on behalf of a teacher in regards to the policy update for the first reading. And again, this Matters of Employment Outside Activities focused it on tutoring. So, this is an email from a teacher sent to me today. "The reaction I had when my principal came and told me I was no longer able to tutor was a reaction I wasn't expecting. I cried. I felt silly and thought, 'Why am I getting so emotional about this?'" "Then I thought about the kids I tutor. We put these kids into classrooms of 28 to 30 kids where there are behaviors and distractions and a difficult curriculum that moves at a fast pace, and expect these kids to thrive. Well, they are not thriving. They are drowning. So, when a parent asked me for help, I wanted to help. I get 30 minutes with these kids I tutor, one-on-one, in a quiet classroom with zero interruptions. What a gift. I am able to learn so much about them as a learner and meet them where they are, not where they are supposed to be. This makes a child feel successful, and kids who feel successful start to make progress. I tutor in my classroom because it makes sense. I refuse to take more time away for my family and children to go to another location. I give so much to this profession, so much time, energy, and love, and my why. For me, it's always about the kids. When I told the parents I work with that I could no longer tutor their child, I felt I was letting them down. The responses I received from the parents were incredible. Some of the responses were, 'She's been loving having the extra help. Her confidence has grown so much since she started working with you.' And then, I heard from a parent that made me realize I must speak up. This just isn't right. The parent said, 'It's extremely hard to get their child to do anything school-related outside of school, so it was nice to find something that he enjoyed doing and didn't give us a hard time about. Thank you for having the willingness to help him outside of the regular school schedule.' And then, I saw this child this morning, and he said, 'Why didn't I see you for tutoring this morning? I love tutoring.' I had to make sure I heard him correctly. The student in my class who struggles with focus, academics, behavior loves coming to school for tutoring. This is about the kids, period. Rules that have been in place can be changed. I have been in this district for over 20 years. I work extremely hard and I am good at what I do. Something that has always guided me in the right direction when asking myself is, what is best for kids? So I ask for the kids, please let us teachers tutor our own students, students in other grade levels, other schools, whoever, because in the end, we should all just want what's best for the kids. It's why we're here, right?" So that was a, an email from a teacher and it's in regards to our policy. And I guess, um, I was taken a little back surprise. I had a few teachers reach out to me in the last week. Not just that, that I just read, but a few others. And I, I guess my question to the policy subcommittee, um, please explain to me how a policy that has been around for perhaps decades, because this is not a new policy, is all of a sudden being enforced? And it's being blamed on the board? Because that was, uh, one thing that was resounding in the teachers that did reach out to me is what was told to them is suddenly, um, the board is coming down really hard on the tutoring policy. And I was really just taken aback by that because it, um, as you see, it's on our agenda for tonight as a first reading, which means we're not even voting it in place. It's something that, um, I was told the union actually asked for to look at the language, because there was some confusion there, so they asked the subcommittee to do that and I believe our subcommittee did that. And so our last meeting was just kind of an update of, you know, hey, this is a language change that the union asked for. It wasn't something we voted on, but now all of a sudden, teachers are being told in their union meetings that the board is coming down hard on this. So I don't know where the breakdown in the communication is. I'm not pointing fingers. I am just saying that's very frustrating to me because when I read this policy, um, I'm very, I'm open-minded to hearing all the legalities and things that might be involved with it, but I actually, I don't agree with this policy as is. So I would be a board member, and I'm only speaking for myself, that I would appreciate the policy committee going back, getting some more information, deciding, should we tweak it? Should we edit it? Should we keep it the way it's written? Should we get rid of it? So I, you know, I, I have a lot of questions about that.
So as the chair of the policy subcommittee, um, it is true that the union did bring forth this policy for a simple language change. This policy has been in existence for quite some time. I, I'm not 100% sure why teachers didn't know about this policy. I, I don't know if that's a breakdown of communication. Obviously, it is if they didn't know about it. I don't know where that fault lies, but nevertheless, uh, the policy simply, um, the language, uh, was just to report to building administration and not to the superintendent. It was literally a one-liner. Don't report to the superintendent, report to building administration. That was the extent of the policy language change.
Well, not, not exactly. The, the change is that it, it originally said with prior permission of their building principal. And we're saying it's just notification.
Correct.
So it, it, we're actually removing permission.
Oh, with knowledge, prior permission. Yeah, I don't have the policy in front of me, but yeah, from what I remember, but thank you for clarifying that.
I guess the confusion is why all of a sudden, if, because I think, and I talked to you, Dr. Robinson, that this, this policy may have been in place certainly before this board sat here and maybe before even you came. Why all of a sudden now are teachers being pulled aside and told this? So, and maybe that's not something that we can, you can answer it off the top of your head, but...
Well, I, I, I think just because you brought it up and you read something from a teacher perspective, it's, it's important for anybody who might be watching this at home that teachers tutor all the time. I mean, they tutor their students, but that's not a for pay. So this had to do more with the business transaction of tutoring for, with pay. So it, I, I just want to make sure that at home, people aren't thinking like, suddenly our teachers aren't being allowed to tutor, because that's happening all the time.
There's, there's different contexts for tutoring. There's, you know, they certainly can help for free. That we have a stipend program where we offer tutor, uh, you know, like, for, to come for a certain subject, but the, the topic of teachers, um, tutoring on their own time for pay, I mean, that's not something brand new either, so as long as it's not in the district.
A policy would have been in place for years, and I would agree, it's been around, because I've looked at this policy via Neola and the, you know, for 20 years, 15, whatever. But the idea is like more the protections, the liabilities, if, 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 if I, if my student is, um, my child is getting tutored for pay by a Romeo employee in our buildings, one could argue that we've approved it. And should something ever go wrong, or that student says somebody was inappropriate, it's more now the whole, they weren't doing what they're supposed to be doing on our time where that protection's there. I don't disagree if there's a breakdown between how it's being implemented or told, that's an issue, but the actual policy itself is really to protect both children and, um, the district and the teachers. It's just like how we would say, you should never put kids in your car, students in your car, even though, oh my gosh, I know the mom and they, they had a rough day today and I, I could drive them home, but then, God forbid, something ever happened, you're doing something outside of when you're on your duty time. So, um, I, certainly I'm sure the policy committee is willing to go back because the communication part of it is a little, sounds not right, but the intent was solely that we didn't want to get in the business of you had to have prior approval. If, if anything, we were lessening the policy, not strengthening the policy. So I don't, doesn't make any sense.
And I do get some of the legalities behind it totally. Some of the parts of the policy, like not allowed to use, um, their, the district materials. I understand not being able to take materials out of the school. I guess just the, the fine line between if you're help, if you're using math manipulatives to help a child during math at, at centers at 1:30 in the afternoon, why is it a problem if you're using them at 4 o'clock on your own time?
I think the problem is to monetarily, if you're, if you're making extra money on the side using district resources after school in the district, then I think, I think that's a, it could be, it could be a problem.
I guess I would too, I would like to, and maybe this is something to discuss with the union. I mean, I've, I've been part of unions and I know how sometimes, um, certain teachers get jealous if other teachers who are willing to do these things are making extra money. Um, and then they start to complain to their union reps about it. So I don't know if that's where maybe this is coming from too. I, I mean, it could be all of these things, but, um, I just, I would love to find, I guess, a compromise or something where we can award teachers who are willing to do this, because even if they're making money off of it, it's still after, you know, it's still a commitment, it's still time away from their personal lives.
But they're being compensated for that.
I don't want to, right, but I don't want to punish that if they're helping kids. I mean, we're not, we're not talking about teachers going into the teacher's lounge and, you know, selling something after school. We're, we're talking about teachers actually helping students who, who need help, so.
I, I think, I, I would recommend, again, it is just first reading. It can stay as is, it can still be eliminated, tweaked, changed, whatever, before a second reading, but I, I think that teacher letters should come to the policy committee and then I think we just need to have a, a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, liability was our concern. And that was brought up. And do we know, and can we find out too, if the people are being compensated for the tutoring?
Um, the people who have talked to us have said, yes, we are compensated.
It's been happening for a long time.
That's not a secret.
That's why there's shock all of a sudden.
Yeah, because this is news to us. I mean, it's news to me.
As they should get paid if they're doing stuff on their own time.
Just not using district resources.
I'm not on policy, but I'm, I am for removing this policy completely. I don't agree with it. I think it's convenient for the students, the parents, the teacher, who knows best? Is the teacher working with that particular student? If we're in the business of education, I feel like this, to me, is a no-brainer of, you know, we're sticking 40 kids in these classrooms. These, these kids are struggling right now. I have a kid in a, in a, in a big classroom. This is only helping these children, so I feel like this is common sense with that, but maybe not.
I, I think when it comes to the paid part, this is, that's really where the, the change is. It's the, sometimes, I'm not saying our teachers would do it, but the reason policies like this get generated is because, um, somewhere in the world, that's how these policies all come, a parent felt like, well, I had to do it, I had to pay extra, that was the only way he was gonna pass the class or she was gonna pass the class. So it really comes down to that monetary part. I just want to remind everybody that our teachers are tutoring for their own love of their own students, not with money, all the time.
All the time.
That is not, this is, this is not actually happening nearly as much as you think, but I know, like, there was a couple really good teachers when my kids were here that helped with, um, you know, preparing for the ACT and we met at the public library and that's where they got tutored and I paid money and, you know, that's, I, I, I think there's a miscommunication. Can we just start with that part of it? Because liability and concern for the district, I think, is important here.
No, we don't disagree.
You gotta look at this last part in this policy. It's not just about tutoring, it's really about, um, for-profit in your classroom. Here's the flyer, here's what, you know, that's really what we're protecting.
Steady income stream.
Yeah, maybe, Todd, can we ask the legal if they have idea on liability on that?
We have, we probably have old stuff.
I can guarantee you that legal counsel will give you a variety of reasons why this exists. And we, we have to be careful because we're looking at this one dimension of this with an elementary children getting tutored by a teacher in a classroom. For-profit.
For-profit.
Work with district resources could take on a variety of avenues, so we just have to be careful. This is why we have a policy provider, this is why we have legal support, and I think we can easily get a clarification of why a policy like this would be in place. And I want to reiterate, um, the district made no communication because the change is not official yet. Okay, we know that this, this change has to go through two steps and we had some conversation with the policy committee that, um, you know, when we get policy recommendations from the policy provider, it's very formal. Is this required by law? Is this recommended by legal counsel? Are we interested in entertaining this change? This was unique and we were asked, Mrs. Butler was asked to bring it to the committee to review, so it didn't come in a Miller Johnson Law Update. Uh, and I think because of that, I don't recall our conversation, maybe it's being as intent as it should have been about the fact that we changed the nature of the policy, it has to go through the process for formal approval, of which tonight we would only be the first step. And, um, the getting to a second reading can take as long as it takes for us to vet it out, but the current policy is still in place, um, as written, um, until the board makes a decision otherwise.
Can we read that? Does anybody have that pulled up?
I've got it right here.
My computer's dead, I apologize.
I know, mine's gonna, oh, mine's gonna die right now too.
I can read it.
I did, okay.
Can you read it?
He's got it.
Employees may not engage in activities which interfere with their, uh, school district's duties and responsibilities or degrade the school district or other employees' professions. Teachers are not permitted to receive pay for tutoring students currently assigned to them. Teachers may tutor other students of the district and, and this was in blue, shall not disclose...
No, shall.
I'm sorry, shall disclose the student's name to the employee services department. This is what we said would be, would be taken out, this section here, with prior permission of their building principal. And then it went on, no prior to, uh, no private tutoring may be provided during the regular school day or school district, on school district property at any time or using school district equipment or supplies.
Yeah, it goes on.
Yeah, the final statement says, "No employee shall attempt to sell or influence a student to buy any product, article, instrument, service, or other such item which would directly or indirectly benefit that employee."
Thank you for reading that language. So that, that is a policy that has been in place for many years. So I guess, you know, one of the questions is why all of a sudden are teachers receiving emails, and I saw it myself, uh, saying that, that this board is currently coming down hard on it. So if you're watching this, um, either, you know, in the next couple days or whatever, or if you're listening, that is not quite the case. So I, I just, and I think we've stressed that, if the policy committee would take a look at that again. And I also want to, um, stress that the, the letter I read is, is one letter. I've also received communication from parents that, and emails that just came to me.
I have parent emails, so I'll send to the committee.
And a few of us have been, reached out from multiple people, so this is not just a one teacher. And I do understand that it's multi-dimensional and that, you know, as a board, we also have to look at legalities and have to think about those things as well. So, um, I appreciate the policy committee looking at that the next time you meet, which I think December 3rd is, is coming up, so.
So I also received a contact from a teacher because apparently this has been happening. They weren't even, many weren't aware of this policy, apparently. So before and after-school tutoring has been happening. So I think, I want to make a stress that, that the shock of not knowing about the policy, I'm not sure why it wasn't communicated. You know, I don't work in the building at that level, that's, that's kind of out of my wheelhouse, but, um, the, the, the shock of not only the board getting blamed for that and then too, was apparently there have been some compensation before and after school. So, um, there was some shock to that because some teachers didn't even know that this policy existed. So that right there is a second issue.
Well, two things. I mean, if, if they were truly doing it for profit, they would have, prior to today, they would have had to get approval from their building principal.
Right, which they, which they did.
So then those people being active should have, should know the policy or why would they...
We should know our policies.
Have gone to their principal, so something's just not right. We just need to find out where the miscommunication is. Yeah.
So just to, just to stress, the first reading does mean that we've read the language and, um, Mr. Boyer read it, uh, and it doesn't mean that we're voting on that specifically. We are voting to accept it as a first reading and it will go back to committee and then, you know, it will come back at a future date for a second reading, which is to decide whether to adopt it officially or not. So, um, any more discussion? I know it took a little bit of time. So I'm just gonna, um, if you, the motion was made and seconded, uh, if we don't have any more discussion, um, we are going to vote on all of these consent action items. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent action items passed and we will move on to communications.
A couple things tonight. Antoinette has reached out in regards to the next County School Boards Association meeting and the Lake Shore School District on December 2nd. So they're looking for RSPVP, especially with the Thanksgiving holiday in there, uh, that comes up right after that. Secondly, I just wanted to let the board know that last week we received, um, State House resolution for Mr. Breenart from Representative Wozniak. He's not our rep any longer when, since redistricting, but my guess is having represented the community for several years, uh, he probably read about it, um, in the paper or saw it on social media and, um, probably knows Mr. Breenart for being engaged in the community. So just wanted to let you know, we are passing that along to, to Greg and, uh, wanna thank Mr. Wozniak for, um, for providing that resolution. We have no subcommittee reports because we haven't had any subcommittee meetings since the October regular meeting, so, um, that's informational updates.
I know we were heavy on committee reports last month, so moving on to superintendent's report.
Yeah, so, um, two weeks ago, tremendous step forward, um, with, uh, financial support for our long-range facilities plan, so I just wanted to take a minute to thank our community for their support. It's always good in the busyness of, you know, trying to continually get better to, to just see, uh, in an instance like this, trust, uh, and, and continued investment to support, you know, having what's, having the best, uh, facilities for our staff and students. So, uh, we'll get to work on creating a construction timeline for the 2025 bond, uh, and also to work towards selling that first series this spring. A reminder that, um, this construction season is group four of the 2021 bond, um, so projects coming out of the new bond, we won't see those, um, probably till this time next year coming to the board for, for approval for the 2027 construction season. Academic Services.
Good evening. I'm officially now gonna speak. So, um, Mrs. Maruka was here and she shared a little bit about some of the things that they were doing to continue to support our students within RVA. I just wanted to, um, give the board an opportunity. We are, um, we do have a resolution to open up RVA for schools of choice, um, for the second semester for students in grade six through 11, if there were any questions that any board member had.
Well, I guess my concern is since she spoke about, you know, having more seniors this year, 67 last year versus the, what, 79 this year? If we're opening up more spots... If we're opening up more spots and we're required to hire another mentor, how is that going to affect being more available for the, you know, the majority, the more, bigger majority of seniors we have this year? I guess I'm concerned that bringing in more outside students that don't live in our district might affect that, um, ability for them to be more, you know, hands-on and one-on-one.
Currently, we only have twenty-six of our hundred and fifty-three students are school of choice. Um, we're not accepting twelfth graders. Um, we, we, we can't. Um, and we don't, even when we open in the fall for school of choice, um, we don't offer it to twelfth graders. There's many things that come with that.
Right.
Uh, transcript reviews and all of that good stuff. So, um, with the new mentor that Mrs. Maruka spoke about, um, Mrs. Tabby, um, she right now has a small caseload and she can go up in the number of students that she would be able to support. We've done this in the past. When we've gotten more kids, we also will get kids from the high school at semester. We don't post for full-time mentors. If we only need a, you know, twelve hours a week, we post for a twelve hours a week. You know, my, my goal in opening for school of choices in the past, we've gotten families calling that don't live in our district to come second semester and without opening for school of choice, we, we can't accept them. It's school of choice, so there's still all of the things that go into applying to be a school of choice student, um, you know, with a, a discipline review, a transcript review, all of, all of those things, um, that we'll do. We have twenty-six current, sixth through twelfth graders that were school, are school of choice students, not necessarily new this year in the fall of school of choice. But we want to give that opportunity. I'm not, and Mrs. Maruka shared it, I'm not that concerned that we're going to get such an influx that our kids won't be supported. Um, we have a metric and we stay firm to that with, with how many hours a mentor can work or wants to work. We have quite a few, a couple of them up there don't work full-time because they have other jobs.
Right.
Um, that we could post for a part-time person and, and find it if we need it.
Well, and again, having worked in this building when I was security, I dealt with, you know, RVA kids too at times. The second concern, obviously coming to my shield, former shield employee mind, is secure, uh, safety and security. So screening, you know, if we're going to bring in students from outside that want to come here, um, just how, how close are we looking at behaviors or, you know, their track record at their previous school, that kind of thing? Like, just, just because we have a building full of ninth graders, so a lot of times, even though RVA is separate, they do intermingle sometimes.
Schools of choice have to fill out a prior affirmation of discipline and if they've been suspended or expelled within the past two school years.
Oh, okay.
They have to, um, be, be upfront and put that or we find out when the school sends us their discipline history.
And then you make your decision based on that? So yes or no?
Whether they are, whether they're allowed to even come as a school of choice student, let alone come into the building.
Okay.
Yeah, I too take it seriously that we don't want students here that may be a safety concern.
I'm just thinking back to, you know, being in this building and, you know, dealing that and ninety percent of the time positive, but there were the few instances where, you know, so that, that's where my mind goes. I just want to make sure we keep our students a priority of safety and.
And the addition of Mr. Stably being a coordinator also allows for some more supervision within the lab when he's not being mentor.
Right.
So you had a fifteen percent increase in seniors. What's your total increase? Do you have a hundred and fifty-four kids right now?
We have a hundred and fifty-three according to Power School.
Okay, so what did you have last year?
About the same.
About the same. I want to say we might even been one sixty-something last year.
And you want to increase on the one fifty-four with, um?
I think that's the thing we're missing is our enrollment has declined in RVA. That is good news because we're providing additional supports at the ten, twelve high school to keep students there if we can. However, at some point in time, their students become credit deficit with the eight-period block schedule and the graduation requirements. And that's why RVA exists for some of our students. We have the capacity to do this. It's a very short enrollment window and ultimately, I'm not sure, we may see any interest. The last thing I would share is, is if in fact someone is choosing to find a better virtual program or transition into a virtual program, the sooner we can get them in, the better. Because some of those students sit out or don't perform at their current school setting and then they apply to come in the summer and we get them and we wish we would have had an additional semester. So if we can connect them mid-year here, build that relationship and then transition into the future year, it's just going to be beneficial, not only for the student, but also for, for our program. So we have the capacity to do this.
Our numbers are down. The past two years, we've decreased. While seniors may be a little larger this year, our other classes are not.
Yeah. So what's your max number?
Well, we really don't have a max number because we can, we can always post for a part-time, which we did last year when we weren't open for school of choice second semester for someone to work, um, uh, I think ten hours a week. And that's two.
At its inception, we felt two-twenty would be about as big as we would want the program to get.
And we've not hit that yet.
Yeah, nowhere near, yeah.
And it's important that we secure these kids for the fall count day because the significant portion of the funding comes, um, in the fall count day. Not that that doesn't matter for the February count, um, but often we don't get the conversation going in order to get them in time. There's a rhythm to the, to the parent-student conversations around going virtual. And we believe this time of year presents an opportunity because you're looking at some semester grades and an opportunity that might be a little different than the summer when we get away from school.
And we think that will be great if we go back in person.
Yeah, so.
And that, that doesn't come to fruition.
How many second semester, uh, school of choice kids did you get last year?
We've never been open for second semester for school of choice. This would be our first offering for RVA. And remember, they're applying to RVA. This doesn't mean they get to then move over to the high school in the fall.
I have two questions, just for clarification for me. I guess I never thought about it. So the RVA, are they subject to all the, um, behavioral threat assessments?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I, I thought so. I just want to clarify.
Yep.
Uh, and then is there a contracted sort of caseload? Because I know it's not really like classroom size, but it kind of is. So is there really a union contract that we adhere to?
They're, they're not part of the union.
They're not, okay.
And we, we use a metric of like one point two-five students.
To what?
Equates to an hour of time.
Can you explain that? Kind of? I mean, give me like a, I'm not sure I equate.
So if I.
A full-time, a full-time mentor has a case.
Are you talking like an FTE for a mentor? Sort of, no? Maybe explain it to me later. Apparently this is complicated.
A full-time mentor caseload is around fifty students.
Correct.
Full-time mentor.
A full-time mentor, so.
If they work five days a week.
So they can take care of one point two-five students, which, so they're about, about fifty kids? Oh, I can.
A little bit more.
Okay.
Little bit, well, yeah.
And we, and we, that's just kind of not contracted, but that's the agreement.
That's the metric that has been working for us, that's manageable, um, for that person if they want to work full-time.
Okay, got it.
The only, I mean, the only one that currently works full-time and he's split between coordinator and mentor is Mr. Stably.
Okay.
Um, we had a mentor that, um, she has forty hours a week.
Okay, and that seems to be working well.
For her right now.
Okay.
We had another mentor that had more, um, students last year, but she pulled back a little bit and couldn't work as many hours this year, so.
And we always have the opportunity to hire a part-time or.
Correct.
Hours or whatever.
Correct.
Understood.
And just clarification, you said fifty-four? So one, one full-time?
Fifty.
Fifty, okay.
Fifty hours a week, or fifty students, I'm sorry, is, is a max caseload.
Okay.
Of a full-time person.
And we only have one.
I understand that.
I, and this is not through any fault of you, Ms. McFarland. I would have appreciated this information, um, prior to, I mean, I know we're voting on this tonight, but it's really hard to vote when I'm hearing this information and hearing more details and then five minutes from now I'm supposed to vote on this. So that's not, that's just.
I apologize, I wasn't asked to get it until today.
That's not you. I just know that for me personally, like I'm, I'm looking at the window, the application window starts January 12th. I don't know if there's some more information that we could have between now and vote on this in December, but I know parents want to make plans, so I don't want to hold that up.
Well, we have to post for so many days. That's why it needed to come to the November meeting and not the December meeting. But there are lots of laws around school of choice and where you have to post, how you have to post, how long you have to post, and then a two-week window for application and when the person has to be in seat and enrolled in the, in the district.
Do you have, um, I guess, feedback from your RVA staff, your mentors and Mr. Stably? I would love to be able to hear from them. And obviously I can't, I can't do that.
About what?
But just if, are they in favor of this? Do they already feel overwhelmed with their caseloads? Where are they at?
None of them are overwhelmed. We've been able to manage and, and we've not had anyone that has too many students for the amount of time that they're working.
What about for in-person? Because kids do have the option to come into the lab, so how is that managed?
I would say if we're lucky, we have two or three kids a week that may come in and take advantage of it unless there's a special activity that you saw pictures of. And that is a planned invite, deliberate, intentional, to have that many kids at once.
Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah, so for the current caseload, you'd need three of the hundred and fifty-four, but some are part-time.
Correct. All but one are part-time.
And that person's working part-time in this, in a mentor position?
Correct.
I guess maybe the most important statistic we heard back in the spotlight is ninety-eight percent graduation rate.
They do a really, really good job. They do a really good job and they take it personally. And when, when Mrs. Maruka talked a little bit about building relationships with the students, um, you know, our, our mentors will have a, um, they get a Google phone, you know, number and they will text kids, like on the weekend if they know, like, you know, dude, like, let's go.
They work a lot of off-regular hours with these students. I, that I do know. Like they're, you know, outside of the building hours that they're here.
Correct.
They are working on their.
They might have to have a, right? They have a weekly Google meet.
Because that's the nature of what RVA is.
Online learners. They don't wake up at eight o'clock and get on the, you know, correct. Some are working. So it has to be a, you know, a, correct.
And please hear that our questions are not questioning RVA staff at all. I know because in my, you know, when I've taught in hybrid situations, I work with mentors. So I, I well know they do way more than what we realize. So it's not questioning what they are doing. It's making sure they are supported before we vote to give them more students.
Correct.
Because I don't want this to be just a money decision. I want it to be about people.
It, it came from Mrs. Maruka. Could we consider opening for schools of choice?
We just want to make sure you guys have everything that you need and that everybody's comfortable and they have the caseload that they can manage. And if they don't, then let us know and we'll approve whatever, you know, you need.
We appreciate that.
Another person or whatever mentor.
We appreciate you, you know, approving the coordinator position, so.
Our new business person's probably.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Whatever you need.
Julia's like, shh.
Um, I, I personally, maybe I just was reading through the lines, but I, I felt Ms. Maruka was very clear in that you, I think you flat-out asked, how are you feeling? Is everything going well? Do you need anything? And that she qualified her answer by, you know, the only thing she would need is more mentors if, you know, the roof came off the house. But it doesn't, right now, the roof is securely on the house and we're good.
Any other questions about RVA? Thank you. I think Mr. Murray's next. Oh, no, you can go. I'll take a little breather.
Well, the rest of it won't be that long. Good evening, just a couple of things for you tonight. A reminder that elementary conferences are Wednesday and Thursday of this week. For those who are attending, our teachers are excited to sit down and talk turkey so close to Thanksgiving about student learning, so. And then, uh, last week, Wednesday through Friday, had the opportunity to travel to Akron, Ohio, um, with four other staff members to attend APS's Akron and Action Events. You may be aware that Akron Public Schools is a Ford Next Generation Learning District. And so, um, really our trip down there was to, um, glean some ideas, um, from the work that they're doing that we could then bring back to Romeo, um, particularly at the elementary level, um, as they are just kind of a few steps ahead of us. And so, um, really what we were able to learn about was Akron's profile of an elementary scholar, which we're working on through the strategic planning process, um, some of the essential experiences that they provide their students, um, in kindergarten through fifth grade. And then, um, a phenomenon called the Amazing Shake, which is a competition that has been started by educator Ron Clark, which really, um, focuses on teaching students professional skills through, um, a variety of real-world scenarios and, um, network challenges. And so, all three items that I've just spoke about exist in our district in, um, some fashion or form, but in reality, what we need to do is polish up what we have, um, and then, and then deploy them. So, um, we were excited to, um, bring some new learning back to Romeo and, and can't wait to get started on, on getting situated to get those out to our students. So, questions for me? Okay, thanks.
What do I got? I just want to thank all the board members that were able to make the Academies at Romi High School Advisory Meeting last week. I hope, um, you enjoyed yourself and that if you were able to attend one of the Pathway Board Meetings, um, that it was, um, informative and that you felt, um, you learned a little bit more about, uh, the pathway, um, that you attended. Tomorrow, we have, um, our first PD advisory, um, meeting. You approved the members at last, um, month's meeting. So we're going to review, yes, we read Moex surveys, Mrs. Ikors. We're going to review the ones that have come in so far from the fall and, um, put together a survey, um, trying to glean some more information, um, to maybe inform what our March PD might look like. Um, and then we're going to create, um, a survey as well for ranking of priorities that, uh, teachers want to see for professional learning next school year. So when we apply, um, as a sketchy, um, awarding district, um, that our list is comprehensive to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our teachers. And then, um, just want to remind everyone on the board and the public that our first production of the year at the high school, PUFs, is this week. If you watch the scrolling, um, screen over there, it tells you a little bit about the tickets. It is some kind of riff off of the Harry Potter, um, uh, series. I'm not quite sure, but I'm excited. Hufflepuff, one of the houses. So I'm kind of nerding out and I'm excited about that. So, please join them, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday matinee. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
So maybe this should have been upfront. But I'm excited, you know, we've, we've, uh, you know, we heard early this school year of Mrs. Lasky's desire and intent to retire December 31st. And so, um, we've gone through an extensive process, uh, and, um, we're excited today was official first day, um, for Beth Pereira, our new executive director of business services. Uh, and so we've got some, some quality crossover time planned for, uh, Vicky and Beth to spend in addition to, um, Beth spending time with the business services staff. We were able to have Beth come Wednesday last week to introduce to the, the district leadership team and then spent some time at the administration building. And, um, she was busy today digging in and spending time with staff. So I did inform her that we had the row of handshakes, um, that, that, uh, for her introduction and meeting the board, but we would forego any picture tonight. All right, Beth, come on up, please. Please welcome Beth Pereira. Congratulations.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. Thank you. So glad you're here. Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thanks, Maria. That's fine.
So extremely difficult positions to fill in public education today, and we're grateful to have such a qualified candidate. Thinking ahead to December, we uniquely are going to have some challenges that Vicky and Beth are going to be able to actually plan together. So we'll have a budget amendment in December. We actually will be bringing a resolution for a refunding of the 2016 Series One bonds. And so, the finance subcommittee will get that information first on December 8th, and then we'll have a presentation and some action at the regular meeting on December 15th. When I spoke last week in a bond update, I'm sorry, last meeting, I talked about Group Three projects and Group Four projects, and I was remiss in not including the upcoming technology projects that are part of the 2021 facilities bond. So more detail here than we probably needed, but Mr. Nelson provided just kind of a heads-up, and we'll go through these things with the Facility Subcommittee in December prior to the regular meeting. But the two significant projects that we'll be bringing forward are phone system replacement, that's our classroom and office phone system, and these are actually being procured through the Sourcewell contract. So consortium pricing, you'll see some of the highlights of what we're targeting. And then, we also have a project around large-venue AV system replacement, probably, I think, 13 to 15 locations throughout the district. This building is excluded because we actually did it as a part of the renovation that happened last spring through the summer. And you'll see a timeline there of a traditional bid process there. Last week, pre-bid conference, bid opening is, happened last week, post-bid interviews right after the Thanksgiving holiday, and then we'll work towards a recommendation to be shared with the Facility Subcommittee, and we'll be bringing these in December. So wanted to let the board know, and I forgot to mention these last month. And then, lastly, tonight, we presented information in your packet and provided some additional information through the weekend and today in regards to the last group of our 25, 26 district leadership priorities. That includes the operations supervisor, operations department supervisor position, and then some dedicated funding for Academy's connected programming, some of what Mr. Murray was referring to at the elementary level, some of what we're hearing from our middle school kids. And so, there is a small allotment of career tech ed money that is in the budget that was approved in October that may be able to support some of this. So, you know, we were originally looking for funding because much of this wouldn't be allowable under CTE funding, but we're really in a situation where we're looking to set a dollar amount to support the funding of these. A lot of times, this might be transportation, but there could be specific events that we're holding that require some supplies, and in some cases, maybe some marketing expenses. So those of you that have been to the nonprofit fair, you know that there's some signage and some things like this. We believe, we believe intently in these experiences for kids, and we think because of that, they're not uniquely connected to curriculum adoptions, or is there money in, maybe in the dedicated building budget that our principals have? But we think we have the opportunity with some categorical funding that we've received around transportation, potentially some of this career tech ed money, and in the absence of that, we would lean on the general fund to supplement that. And then, we'll track these expenses and right-size the dollar amount to make sure that we're including that in the preliminary budget each year. Any questions on either of these Group Four priorities?
I don't have any questions, but I just, I want to point out for the community and just thank you, Dr. Robinson, for all the information that I asked for over the weekend that you sent out. I know when we hear all these priorities, the board was presented this in March, I believe, at a workshop. It was, you know, a very long workshop, hearing all the different things that the leadership team kind of hopes for, for the, over the next year, and then they tailor that list down. I made a list of all, your original list, I think it was 19 items, and then eventually, through some, you know, different meetings and discussions, it was narrowed down by the leadership team down to nine. And then, I went through and looked at, out of those nine, how much directly impact education and teacher and student support. And not that all the other things that we do in our district aren't important, there's a lot of moving pieces. You know, the operations supervisor position, those things are needed, even though it doesn't directly have to do with curriculum. But out of the nine things that were then grouped, six out of the nine, you know, to the best of my ability, were, you know, impacted directly with education. So I know with the bond, there was a lot of discussion, and people that reached out to me and said, "Well, you know, I support the district, but why does all this stuff have to do with athletics and those things?" And that's just the nature of bonds. So, you know, I think it's important to showcase, and, you know, there's a lot of things that we're doing for education that have to do with kids and learning in the classrooms, which obviously is our main priority, even though sometimes, when you're going out for a bond, it may not always feel that way initially. So I appreciate that information. And then, I had a question. This is a little bit separate from the funding resolution, but I've had two teachers reach out to me in the last six months about field trip funding for core classes. And so, I went back to them and just asked, you know, "What is your process? Do you have a process for asking for permission to go on these field trips?" And I was sent the form that they have to fill out to justify, you know, and all of those things. And on the form, it doesn't say anything where it has to be hooked back to CTE, but I guess the complaint is we don't have funding for those types of field trips, meaning not funding to cover the expense of admission, but sometimes, teachers are told, "Nope, you can't go on that, we don't have funding for buses," or "We don't have funding to cover your substitute." And I'm just throwing that out there since we're talking about this. Is there a way we can look into that or streamline the process so that if we do have those core, you know, academic teachers saying, "Hey, you know, I have this great idea," and they would have to justify it and how it connects to their curriculum? But, you know, funding for them to make that a little bit more accessible to them. So that's just kind of a thing to throw out there.
Yeah, I would suggest that we take that conversation back to the Curriculum Subcommittee, and we can talk a little bit more intently about what's there, how that's connected to building budget funds. The reason why we're presenting this unique thing is because we're creating signature experiences that every kid in a grade level is going to do across all five buildings, and that's why we believe that it takes a unique allocation to do this that isn't a burden on the building budget and/or curriculum and instruction adoption dollars or anything like that.
Okay. So we can add that to our agenda for next week. The ever-growing Curriculum Subcommittee agenda.
Any other questions? All right. And last but not least, soon it will be Thanksgiving and the season of Thanksgiving, so just wanted to wish everyone in the community and the board a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
That's my report for tonight.
All right. We do not have any yellow slips for public comment. If you would like to speak, you are welcome to grab a slip back there and hand it in for our last public comment time. But otherwise, we are going to move on to our regular meeting action items. So our first one is Employee Services Resolution Number 98, and that's our personnel update. And I just want to draw attention that one of the items listed in that is a new IRR, IRR teacher allocation that is still to be determined. And attached to that sheet was justification for that. So I know we've heard a lot about that program at Hevle, so that is part of our Employee Service Resolution amongst some retirees and other things. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Antoine. Support. Support by Bonik. Any questions?
Isn't it two people? You have one, it's an I-
A teacher and two paraprofessionals.
Two, yeah, so three total, okay.
Any questions, comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Employee Services Resolution Number 99. This is the Board of Education Policy Update, Policy 4003, the employee salary schedules, which we heard about last month. So this is the official approval of that or not? So do I have a motion?
Motion. Support.
Motion by Boyer, support by Antoine. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next one, Business Services Resolution 100. This is the Romeo Virtual Academy School of Choice approval for second semester, which we heard a lot about tonight and had some good discussion around. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Rice.
Support.
Support by Bonik. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Letter D, Superintendent's Resolution 101A, the District Leadership Priorities Group Four. This is the operations supervisor.
So moved.
Moved by Bonik. Support by Antoine. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Superintendent's Resolution 101B, District Leadership Priorities Group Four, the Academy's connected to the program funding, this was the CTE funding that Dr. Robinson just spoke about.
So moved.
Moved by Bonik.
Support.
Support by Chahaki. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any board discussion for the good of the district? Mr. Antoine?
Yeah. I just would like to congratulate Beth and welcome her to Romeo. I was on the selection committee for the final three that went to Dr. Robinson, and she was definitely my number-one candidate based on the board. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, I would like to congratulate those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders today. They did a fantastic job, so, like we said, so articulate. I just love that portion of our meetings that we've started to include that. And congratulate our fall sports team for, fall sports teams for a successful season.
Yes, I know our football is usually in the forefront, so they kind of had a disappointing loss this past weekend, but our swim team and our volleyball team and our cross-country team, those are the ones that I know about at least.
Yeah, we're intending on bringing our all-state athletes from the fall season to the December spotlight.
Nice. Okay. Anyone else? All right.
So, Mrs. Ikors, I wasn't planning on doing this, but I'm going to put him on the spot.
Uh-oh.
You recognize Mr. Irvin? Dan, wave your hand, please. He's been with us for a couple of years now, really doing great work, and Dan's got the opportunity to take his services way closer to home in a project at OCC Orchard Ridge or whatever they call that. This was actually on the table almost two years ago, but the funding for the project down there was delayed, so we were able to keep him. But if anyone is familiar at all with the 696 closure that is shifting, that has been Mr. Irvin's existence both ways. So we're sad to see him go, but I just want to thank him. It's been, it's been a pleasure to work with him. He's filling in this week. He was already supposed to be gone, but for some reason, the construction management world has extra deer hunters than most. So he's agreed to be here this week, and I think Mr. Storm would agree. He's truly been a blessing to work with, and we're going to miss him. So thank you, Dan, for your time and support.
Thank you.
All right, I do not have any other public comments, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Support.
Motion by Rice, supported by Bonik. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.